Okay, I'm going to call the meetings for order. The special board of Alderman meeting. It's Tuesday, August 6th. 7:00 PM here in the Aldermanic chamber. The prayer will be offered by city clerk Trish Piatzou and Alderman at-large Dave Tenza will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Gidge.
President.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright. Alderman Dowd.
President.
Alderman Cleese. Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola. Alderman Tenza.
President.
Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
We have eleven members present. Thank you. Alderman Cleese is on vacation. Alderman Malisi Golia is on vacation and Alderman Schmidt is not feeling well and won't be joining us this evening. Also in attendance from the environment and energy committee, Doria Brown, Anita Arden Kayla, Deb Chisholm, Carrie Converse, Bob Hayden, Justin Cates, Gary Lambert, Sarah Marchand, James Pyle, and Sylvie Stewart. Also, his honor, Mayor Jim Donches. Communications.
Communication from Lori Wilshire, president, Board of Alderman, relative to the special board of Alderman meeting.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. So tonight, we have a presentation and I'm going to turn this over to the mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. So what I will do is give you an overview of how we've gotten to where we are. Then Ms. Chisholm and/or Ms. Marchand will tell you a little bit about the procurement process, the RFP we put out for the energy provider that was selected, that being Revision Energy. And then Revision will give you a presentation regarding what we hope to do with solar on city buildings as well as the Conway ice arena. In addition to some members of our energy committee, of course, we have representatives of the fire department, Deputy Assistant Chief Walker and Commissioner Grant. And Charlie Hall, thank you, Charlie, for coming, is president of the board of the Conway Arena. So it is good that we have everyone here. So some months ago, we determined that we would like to undertake to solarize some of our city buildings. And we put out an RFP asking for energy providers, solar providers, to provide a structure as to how they would undertake to provide solar for these buildings. And we asked them to examine various buildings to determine which are more amenable in the short term to make solar conversion, erect a solar array. And there is some time pressure here because there is a tax credit associated with the construction of a solar array which declines, is reduced, at the end of 2019. There will, and Revision will explain more about this, but the tax credit still exists in 2020 but is lower than it is if the construction is completed in 2019. So we put out the RFP. We had four or five responses and, as I said, either, I think Ms. Chisholm and maybe Ms. Marchand will fill you in on some of those details. But we had a committee to review the responses and the best deal for the city was provided by Revision Energy. They were selected and they, there were a number of people on the committee. And then they and the city moved forward to examine the buildings where solar might work. And it came down to three or four possibilities where this would work well right away. One was the garage for, the bus garage, the transportation garage out on Riverside Drive. You need both a roof that is amenable to this and also a structure that can support the weight of the solar array. In addition, the Lake Street Fire Station was one of the other buildings that was identified as a good candidate for solar. There was some work done on the Transportation Office Building where Public Works is as well. That had, was questionable from a structural point of view. And also, the Public Works Building was examined, but when, the Public Works Garage, that could work for solar, but we really need at least 10 and maybe 20 years of life to make the solar investment worthwhile. And since the future of the Public Works Garage is in doubt, we could be replacing it or expanding it or something else, that was thought to be not a good fit for a long-term project such as this. But also, because the financial benefits to be gained by any participant in the solar project grow to the extent there is a larger scale, it seemed like it made sense to talk with the Conway Arena about including us together in basically the same project under the same terms. Of course, their finances would be separate from ours, but we would both gain the benefit of some as a result of a larger-scale project. So we talked with the directors, Board of Directors of Conway, and they were very receptive to the idea because they do use a lot of electricity. Now, they have one concern, and I think we can take care of that, and that is that the city's lease with Conway is running out in not too long. And Charlie can give us the exact number of years. They would like to, but they would like to extend the lease under the current terms for another 20 years to, and that would be a separate proposal coming to the Board of Alderman, so that they can participate in this, in this project and make solar work for them over a longer-term period. It seemed to me, of course, the Board of Alderman would need to approve the extension of the lease, but it seems to me that they have done an extremely good job for the community, offering low-cost ice to our teams as well as many, to our high school teams, as well as providing ice for all of our recreational hockey and many other adults, free skating. They've done an extremely good job of managing this situation. And they have, in addition, generated profit in the neighborhood of $650,000, which Alderwoman Karen can tell you, they have contributed, as a member of the commission, that they have contributed to the nonprofits in the area. This year, there were about $50,000 or $55,000 worth of awards. So the relationship, public partnership, public-private partnership with Conway has been, I'd say, highly successful and therefore, to me, the extension of the lease is something we would, we would do anyway. And if it helps them help us with the solar project, that seems like something that we should, in my mind, undertake and certainly seriously consider. In any event, that gives you an overview of the situation, I think. Now, I would ask either Deb or Sarah or both to come up and kind of brief us on the procurement, what was done to select vets and select the various energy companies which led to the selection of Revision Energy.
Hi, good evening. Deb Chisholm, I work in community development with Director Marchand. The mayor did an excellent job of pretty much covering everything. We did go through a procurement process. Of course, we followed all the rules and regulations of the purchasing department downstairs. But we were, we were lucky to get proposals from four different solar companies. Gave us a lot of options and a lot of, a learning curve for myself. I'm typically, my hat is usually waterways manager, but for tonight, I'm solar person. So the, Sarah and myself and Bob Hayden from Standard Power were the review committee. So we reviewed all of the proposals that came in. We got four proposals in. We took two and moved them further, asked specific questions about specific properties and specific pricing. Thankfully, again, Bob Hayden was on our review committee because Bob is Standard Power. He's got an excellent background in solar and renewable energy. So he was really able to dive into the pricing that was being offered by all of the competitors. And as it turned out, Revision Energy was, for us, the preferred vendor. And so far, I mean, the selection was made several weeks ago, a couple of months ago, and I know that Revision is really chomping at the bit to get started on this and we've, we've been working very closely with them. It's been a bit of a challenge to find the right properties. As the mayor indicated, there are many different criteria that will keep properties in the portfolio or kick them out. And one of the things is the status of the roof. Not every building that the municipality owns has a, has a new roof. So that's been a very huge challenge to figure that out. And thankfully, we were able to have Conway come to the, come to the rescue. They have an expansive roof that's in really great shape. So, so again, Dan and James will give you way more of the details on how this is all going to play out with the power purchase agreement that we need to get into with Revision Energy, similar to what Conway Arena will be also signing up for as well. So if anyone has any questions specifically for me, the details are going to come from Revision Energy and their presentation, but from a purchasing standpoint, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Now, I would just add before we bring up Revision that, of course, we have a couple of major goals here that have been articulated by the Board of Alderman, by the energy committee, and by the city. First, we are trying to reduce our carbon footprint and we've established some goals with respect to that. This will help us to, help us work towards that goal. And Revision will tell you that if we sign this and we can get this done by the end of the year, we may be able to add a couple of add-on buildings that are not good enough to be standalone but could possibly be added to the project, City Hall being one of them and possibly one or two others. And of course, the other goal is to save the city money, which we can do. And you will see the details of the financials when they, when they present the details regarding the cash flow and the rest of it. So thank you to Deb and everybody who worked so hard on coming up with this. One more thing, there is some, we'd really need to give Conway a clear sense that this lease extension would be acceptable so that they can undertake this with confidence. And we need to take, I think, take some steps, we hope, by the end of the month, end of August. But we can talk more about the timing and the details later on. Why don't we now, yeah?
I think Alderman Laws had some questions for Deb.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay. Well, no, go ahead. I mean, you know, why not?
Just, I remember vaguely, someone once said that there is a million square feet of roofage in our public school system. And I'm just wondering why that hasn't been a consideration because I feel like those are relatively, some of them are relatively recent structures that could support it and...
Alderman Dowd, did you want to take a shot at that?
Yeah, I'll take a good shot at that. Most of the schools, even though they have flat roofs, do not have the structure to hold the weight of solar panels. We are looking, we will have, if we build a new school down in the south part of Nashua, we will have solar panels on the roof. But as far as the other schools, they weren't built to hold that additional weight. So the only other building that comes to mind that could support the weight is the police department. That building was built so they could add one or two additional floors. So I'd have to presume that it's strong enough to hold solar panels, assuming we're not going to move the, add a couple floors to that building, but that's another consideration. But no, we've looked into the other schools. If there's a roof that will support it, we will look into it. But most of them won't.
Thank you.
Now, I would add to that, that when we hire the new energy manager, which you have authorized, and the, there are school projects, though, that certainly can be undertaken. For example, the one that we've talked about with the school department and which could yield, there would be some costs associated with it, but which would yield significant benefits, is the conversion of each of the high schools to LED. Now, we've, we've seen some rough estimates that that might involve an investment of a million dollars plus per school, but could save $125,000 plus per year after that investment is made. But as we sort of began to talk about that project or that idea, the energy manager would be able to work in detail to design the project that would work for the school, that would maximize the energy savings while at the same time accommodating the needs of each group at the schools, enough light for the teachers, the students. And it needs to be a very detailed examination of every, of each building to determine exactly what light should be converted and, you know, what is the best project. And to define the project and then put it out to bid or work with a private provider to undertake a project which we define. So I think that's, when we get the energy manager on board, what we'll try to work on with the school department.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam Chair, President. I would like to ask Ms. Chisholm a question, perfect for you because you're in charge of the dam projects and the water and everything. How does it affect the state as far as the net metering is? You know, I'm kind of concerned before we go down this road, which is, I think is definitely worthwhile, but I know there's, in total, we have the dams that are generating and we're getting some net metering with that and put these other projects and pile that on. Is there any jeopardy or anything, are we going to top off with, that we're generating too much?
No, that, that won't be the case. I would put a pitch in for people supporting the override of the veto of HB 365, which would expand net metering to five megawatts, for those who might be listening, state reps.
I think you're preaching to the choir here.
Well, I will say that that, that's something that has been supported by, by all of the state reps in Nashua, which it is, it's preaching to the choir, but it's, it's the choir then preaching to their friends who might not have an understanding of what net metering really entails. But no, the solar, adding the solar project on is not going to put us in peril of topping off. And like I said, Dan and James have the details on exactly how much power will be generated and how that net metering will actually work for the solar projects themselves.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Wherever you want to sit, any open, any open seat?
Just thinking for, in terms of moving through the slides here.
I'm going to be giving whoever it is.
Perfect. Maybe we can, if this is acceptable.
That is acceptable.
Great. And we just got to make this. Let me just look at the screen, sorry. Can you just make it full screen? Thank you. Well, good evening and thank you very much for the opportunity to present the solar proposal for the city of Nashua. My name is Dan Weeks, resident of Nashua, joined by James Hasselbeck, Director of Operations for Revision Energy. I serve as Director of Market Development. And... Maybe at the bottom, actually.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Okay. Hopefully, this will do the trick. We greatly appreciate the due diligence that Deb and Sarah, Bob and others on behalf of the city have invested over a few months now. It's been a joy to work with them and we're excited to be here today to present what we think is a very beneficial and positive initial phase of solar projects for the city with plenty of potential in the future, should the city decide. I wanted to start with a quick introduction of Revision Energy. We are, James and I represent 260 co-owners of the company. We are a 100% employee-owned company. Have been installing solar in northern New England since 2003 with our co-founder, Bill Barron's beginning actually in the 1980s. There's been obviously a lot of development in that time. We take a lot of pride in being an employee-owned company, meaning the guys up on the roof and gals who also install with us do have an equal stake in the company and are deeply invested in, in doing it right. We are also a certified B corporation, a benefit corporation, which is a legal commitment we make as a company to operating in a triple bottom-line manner. That is, profits are part of what we do as a private business, but people and planet come first. We have so far constructed over 8,000 solar energy systems and complementary technologies as well to enable buildings, municipalities, private homes to be non-reliant on fossil fuels and energy self-sufficient instead. Our mission is to help this region. New Hampshire is where we do about half of our business. We began up in Maine. We do also work in Massachusetts as of the last two years. And our mission is to help our communities make the transition to self-reliance, to clean renewable energy, and protect the things we value, clean air, clean water, clean land in the process. We'll focus naturally on solar at this point, but any chance we get to educate folks around the set of complementary technologies that do in fact make it possible for individuals but also communities to be, to lessen their reliance on imported energy through some of these complementary technologies. A couple of the nonprofits and municipalities we've been honored to work with, and I would point out, just across town from here, the Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter was one of our first local projects two years ago. Very proud to be helping them save money through this power purchase agreement, which I'll describe in a little more detail in a moment. And on the commercial side, we also work with, with a number of good businesses in New Hampshire and in the region. We can go into detail, if you'd like, on other municipal projects that we've done, but just a couple of examples here in New Hampshire, which are similar in scale or type of technology to what we're proposing for Nashua. And again, happy to provide details and references if you'd like. And finally, we were proud, two weeks ago, to be named again for the third consecutive year the number-one solar installer in New England and to have received some other honors. We are part of a growing community with close to 1,000 solar jobs in the state, many good contractors that we consider partners, and we do expect in the coming years to see many more added as well. I'm going to give a quick overview of how we settled on the two recommended sites for 2019. Ask James, who runs our construction end of the business, actually building the systems to provide a little more detail and answer technical questions you may have about the types of installations. And then I'll return to the all-important financials for this proposal. As you heard from the mayor and from Deb, there were a lot of, there are a lot of city rooftops that are potential candidates for solar down the road. I'm not zooming in on all of them here by any means, but three main areas that we focused on with a starting list at the outset of the PPA several months ago of 24 city properties clustered in downtown Nashua, out at the wastewater treatment plant, and at the DPW and transit garages. We did do assessments of, careful assessments of 10 of the initial 24 after doing some initial assessments of all 24. The two highlighted are the ones that we are recommending at this point. But just for your interest to give a sense, at the top, the first five are the, what we defined as the maximum value opportunities. These are projects with fairly substantial scale. Economies of scale, as the mayor mentioned, do certainly matter in terms of the economics of these projects. But through a, an extensive vetting process over several months, we did narrow down to these two projects, which again, is not to say that we wouldn't love to see Nashua with us or other solar companies install on many other roofs. But in many cases, roof age was a concern, as much as we can put panels on a 15- and 20-year-old roof. And sometimes, if the owner is preparing through some resealing of seams, that does make sense, but generally, we don't recommend it on roofs of that age, rather wait until they're replaced. So that was the primary reason why these projects, the ones not highlighted, were excluded from the portfolio, but we can provide more detail if you wish on others. Needless to say, there is a lot of opportunity and should the city determine after a first wave that it makes sense to add, we certainly would love to see the city do so with us or with other contractors. Let me turn over to James to provide a little more detail on the two highlighted projects. We can also speak to Conway if you wish, although we felt it appropriate to focus on the two city-owned buildings for tonight.
Thanks for that overview, Dan, and thank you, everybody, for the time this evening. So as Dan mentioned, my role is to oversee our design, estimating, construction, and operations and maintenance arms of the company. So I am a construction guy, so I'm happy to get into the weeds, particularly of any concerns the Alderman may have on any of these projects and hopefully address them. So the first building we wanted to focus on is a really great opportunity here at the transit garage. So what we see here is obviously an overhead image. Each of those little blue rectangles represents one individual solar panel. Each solar panel is roughly three and a half feet wide by about five and a half feet tall. So we're right around 19 and a half square feet. So on this type of roof, a flat EPDM or, you know, rubber-sealed roof, we do not penetrate that roof surface. And that's really important. My team is a bunch of engineers, plumbers, and electricians. We are very, very interested in building solar energy systems and not at all interested in owning roofing warranties. So we work, but, but it's obviously, as you can imagine, a key part of our business. So we work extremely closely with all of the major roofing manufacturers prior to our installation. And if you're in the procurement or construction world, you may be familiar with something called a submittal process. So we do something fairly similar. So prior to any installations, we get ahold of the existing warranty holder on the roof or that's the roofing manufacturer, the roofing contractor, and we basically submit to them the details of the racking manufacturer that we're going to use. And they, all of the big roofing manufacturers have a very specific process in place where they basically review and then confirm that the products that we're using will not void the warranty. And that is a crucial piece of us. So sometimes, there's inspections involved and there's certainly a lot of back and forth that we undertake. But the key takeaway for this group, I think, is that the work we're doing here will not be putting holes in these roofs and we will not be impacting any existing roofing warranties. And there's a documentation stack about this thick that we provide at the end of the project. So how this works, we're not putting holes in the roof, so what we're doing is we're doing a lot of smart engineering and we use what's called a ballasted system. So basically, we're using weight. I don't know what photos you have there. Yeah, so you can see in some other similar projects, we have Contemporary Automotive in, over in Milford, Tupelo Music Hall, and the Wirebelt Company just up in Londonderry. But basically, we've determined that by strategically placing a very specific quantity of concrete ballast blocks in a very specific weight structure, that that provides enough downward pressure to hold the solar panels secure. It adds anywhere between four to seven pounds per square foot of dead load to that building. The difference is, is based on the wind load in the building and importance factors. And as part of our due diligence, as Dan alluded to, we also do a structural engineering review of each building. So we go in with our professional engineer, take a look at the building structure and confirm with 100% certainty that everything that we're doing is structurally sound. I guess that's kind of it.
And I would just point out, the production data, you do see the, the array capacity, that's the DC direct current capacity of 103.9 kilowatts, 297 panels. And then really, the important number there is the power output, 106,500 kilowatt-hours per year. Maybe a quick word on, on how we come up with those power projections?
Sure. Yeah, so you can see the graph in the top-right corner and it's, it's difficult to see the things on the bottom, but on the left-hand axis, our vertical axis, that's the production quantity on a monthly basis. And our east-to-west axis is months, starting in January and ending in December. So as you can see, you know, we see very low production in December, January, and February. Because we're basically assuming that those arrays are going to be covered in snow. And it is not worthwhile for anybody to get out there and shovel these rooftops. So basically, we just model out... So basically, we just model out that production. And how we get to that modeling is using some industry-standard software. It's not our own guesses. It's a program called Helioscope, which is vetted by both the National Renewable Energy Laboratory and a lot of financial institutions that invest in these projects. And we're able to provide really accurate production data by utilizing existing weather data from this area. I think our ticket is in Nashua Airport for the specific site, so very detailed historical weather data over 30 years in town to then we look at, okay, here's our system, here's the pitch of the panels, the orientation of the building, to provide a really accurate idea of what we can expect for power generation. The other thing that we consider as far as our design goes is long-term longevity and usability of that building. So you'll see on the transit garage, it's kind of a funny-shaped array. Well, we want to make sure this system's going to be operational for 30-plus years. In that timeframe, all of those little boxes there, those are HVAC units, air conditioners, compressors, they're going to need to be replaced, they're going to need to be maintained, they're going to need to be accessed. So we want to make sure in our designs to account for that, so future city maintenance totally outside of the project, outside of the solar project, is not negatively impacted. So that's the reasoning for the kind of broken-up array there.
And just for your interest, before moving to the next building, we do have on this overview slide the percent offset at these facilities. You see load offset the rightmost column, and for that Public Works Garage, that projected output, power output, amounts to about 70% of the power consumption. I can speak in more detail to Alderman O'Brien's question about net metering, but in brief, that is a fairly ideal arrangement, where all of the power will be used behind the meter, so to speak, on an annual basis, with a little bit of surplus power generated during the peak summer months, less than what is consumed, obviously, during the lowest production winter months. But you will be getting the equivalent of full value for nearly 100% of the power, because as a quote-unquote "small customer generator," a system below 100 kilowatts AC, that's the AC inverter rating, we can differentiate a little more detail if you'd like, but as a defined small customer generator, the net metering statute provides for the ability to use that power anytime within a monthly billing cycle, meaning a peak summer day like today, where you overproduce, will provide power that you use next week when it's raining within the same billing cycle, or at night, when the HVAC and the lights may be on. So we can elaborate in more detail if you'd like, but being at close to but below 100% is a really ideal place to be in terms of the value of solar electricity, and both of these facilities are 70 and 81%, a nice place to be. James, the fire station?
Sure. So this was the second project that we identified that would provide the greatest economic and environmental value to the city on the Lake Street Fire Station. So it's a beautiful building, and here we're looking at a more conventional pitched roof. This is the standing seam roof, correct? Yep. So here, again, it's a metal standing seam roof, so if you're familiar, they're metal plates with these kind of little seams that are visible. Those are our favorite kind of roofs to work on in New Hampshire for two reasons. One, they last forever, so there's no issues about roof longevity. And two, we're also not penetrating these metal roofs. We work with a couple different manufacturers who design and supply these types of clamps, and the clamps clamp directly onto the seams themselves. So instead of penetrating through the roof membrane and into the structural surface of the building, we are clamping onto those seams to give us the structural integrity we need to support the solar array. Here, because we're not relying on concrete blocks, the dead load is significantly less. So these systems, we're only adding anywhere between two to three pounds per square foot. Even so, we still run through the same type of professional engineering analysis to confirm the structural suitability of the building. So this is a very straightforward install. Again, the big concerns that we always get is what's going on with my roof warranty? We're going to be able to maintain that, we're going to be able to utilize a variety of different roof surfaces. You see, we're not putting solar panels on the northern side of things, focusing on the most productive sections of the roof, and that's fairly straightforward from our perspective. These are very simple installations.
And I would note again, that 126.8 KW, that's the DC, the panel rating, that's each of the 409 panels times their wattage of 310 watts. That is, again, the DC rating, the AC rating, we have capped strategically at 100 kilowatts to retain that small customer generator classification, which increases the value of every kilowatt-hour that we export.
I think that that's a really excellent point. Solar, frankly, is quite complicated. We are trying to balance economics, we're trying to balance environmental goals, and we're trying to balance often rapidly-changing state and federal policy. So it's basically, it's our job to figure out what the best end result is, taking all those factors into consideration, which is why we landed on these first kind of few buildings here, to kind of strategically maximize both the financial and environmental benefits to the city.
And just a few examples of pitched roof installations, what we're more familiar with seeing in our communities, the flush-mounted arrays on these pitched roofs. In the lower right, you see a similar standing seam metal roof. It will rise about three inches above the seam, so plenty of room for airflow, and a very straightforward installation. Dartmouth College in the upper right also uses primarily standing seam roofs, which we've done about 20 of. The inverters?
Yeah, so solar systems have three primary components. The solar panels, which generate the electricity and DC power, the racking, which is our method of attachment to the building at the ground area, and then the inverters. So the inverters are kind of the workhorses of the system. So the inverters take that DC power generated by the solar system and convert that into usable AC electricity that then gets fed into that building's electrical system. So high-level overview of how it works is when those solar panels are generating electricity, the inverters input that power at the same voltage that that building typically would use. So in these cases, we're talking about three-phase 480-volt power. The building will use that solar energy first, and any excess power that the building needs that the panels are not generating will be pulled in from the utility just like it is normally. But as Dan mentioned, there's also going to be times when the solar panels are generating more power than that building is using at any given moment, and in that case, the excess goes out into the grid, taking advantage of that net metering, that net metering regulation that the Public Utilities Commission has made law, and providing credits to, credits to that utility account. The other really neat thing about the inverter technology and the systems that we've designed here is it gives us also a very high level of visibility into each individual solar panel. So we're using something called solar power module level electronics, but basically, it provides two key benefits: safety, primarily for first responders in the event of an emergency, and then data monitoring access. So what that means is that I'm able to see each individual solar panel in what we call a data monitoring portal, and I'm able to make sure that that individual panel is performing up to our expectations and meeting the warranty obligations as well as our production estimates. That also provides a ton of opportunity to take that data, which there's a huge amount, and utilize it in other initiatives in the town. We've had great success with other municipalities by integrating some of that data that we're able to pull from the solar energy systems into local educational curriculum, as well as helping provide really hard output data to achieve any carbon offset goals that the city has. So we're going to be able to provide that. The other benefit I mentioned is safety. Safety's a major thing that we think about all the time, right? So the other advantage of these power level electronics is, in the event of an emergency, with one switch, you can see some disconnects out there, there's usually, these big gray boxes are all disconnects, one switch gets turned off, and every single solar panel within 30 seconds goes to zero volt, or less than 15 volts, so effectively zero. So if there ever was an incident on that roof where first responders needed to get up there to put out a fire or do anything else, we want to make sure that they're protected and not working around live DC electricity, and these designs take that into account.
Just a rundown of the major components, we spoke about these. If you'd like to know more, just a little more detail on the two primary components, the solar panels and the inverters. Do you want to add a word on the technology we use?
It's hard for me to add one word. But long story short, we, at Revision Energy, we take our engineering and system designs extremely seriously. So we are a New England-based company, we live and work in these communities. Every solar panel, every inverter is not manufactured equally. We focus exclusively on what we call, and what the industry calls, tier-one components. So tier-one means that, you know, we and our partners have gone through some pretty strict quality vetting processes, not just on the manufacturing, but also on the financeability and bankability of that particular company. Is on a previous slide, Dan showed, there's some really long-term warranties for many of these products, 25, 30 years, and in a really long commercial life. Well, that's only helpful if that company is around to service that warranty. So we're very serious in, you know, the products that we recommended, because ultimately, we, Revision Energy, are standing behind it. The other advantage we have is we run our own, we call it the Operations and Maintenance Division. So I have a team of nine master electricians who go around and maintain our 8,000 systems that we've been building for over 14 years. That also gives us some great insight into what does go wrong with these systems over 10, 15, 20 years, so we can then integrate that knowledge into both our component choices and new system design engineering to try and solve the problems that we're identifying in older systems. Sorry, I couldn't do that.
Cheers. We've thrown a lot of info on you in terms of design and engineering. Just final slide is a quick window into the process that our team goes through. You want to wrap it up?
Yeah. So frankly, the construction is the easiest part of this project. For the fire station, I think, once we actually started construction, we'd be in and out of there in roughly three weeks, between three and four weeks on the other building there. So the bulk of the work that we're doing is right now, the finalizing our engineering and design, working with the utility on what's called the interconnection application, so that makes sure we don't run into any of those net metering issues. So we do all that stuff. Our structural engineering to confirm that the buildings are sufficient capacity-wise, coordinating with the roofing manufacturers, making sure that that warranty gets maintained. Procurement, you know, it is, have you heard about these tariffs? That's made my life very, very difficult. It's very difficult, but that's a different meeting. But, so the procurement is another piece that we have to start very early. So basically, the bulk of our work is in these big, those three big orange lines that you see, and then, you know, we've kind of anticipated roughly three to five weeks of actual physical construction once we start. So we're quite anxious to get moving on these projects in the near term. We've already kind of, in a gesture of good faith, we've started the interconnection application process, we've started the structural review process, and I have, you know, our vendors, you know, anxiously awaiting purchase orders for this equipment, so we can kind of meet these construction timelines, which actually provide a financial benefit if we get it done and operational in 2019, which I think you can get into.
Great. I think that gives you quite a bit of information, but we're happy to take questions regarding the design and engineering, and then we can get into the finances. Yes, sir, we can perhaps work our way around if, please, President.
Well, I'm going to call on people. I'm going to start over here with Alderman Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My, just a question. Construction-wise, can you do this up to when the snow flies, or what's your limitation on that?
Yeah. So yes, is the short answer, and yes for a variety of reasons. One, it's actually really important for us as a business to provide 12-month employment to all of our co-owners, so we work right through the winter. What gets challenging once the snow flies is the ballasted flat roofs. So if we were getting close to the snow season, I would make sure that we built that building first, and then we'd move to the Lake Street Fire Station second.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman, Jerry.
So is the purpose to provide the electrical, for the electrical needs of the building on which the solar panels sit, more than generating electricity that could be used elsewhere? I mean, I'm wondering why we're putting them on buildings to begin with. Why not put them, you know, like a solar farm on land? You'd avoid all the problems with, you know, roofs and whether the building can support it and all that stuff.
Good questions. We do all of the above. The value of doing rooftop solar is that when you use that power onsite, behind the meter, so to speak, you're offsetting full retail-priced electricity, power you would otherwise have to buy from the utility at that moment in time. In practical terms, that can mean a premium on a per-kilowatt-hour basis of anywhere from 10 to 30%. So it's higher value when used onsite. That said, naturally, when you have multiple acres to work with, you get terrific economies of scale, and the build costs do come down commensurate with that. And we're pleased to be in discussions, still fairly early stage, that Deb has facilitated with the Nashua Airport Authority, which has several unused acres to the far west of the runway, and that is certainly a possibility for 2019, where the city could generate multiple megawatts of power to offset the equivalent of dozens of buildings.
Thank you.
Alderman, Kelly.
Yeah, so you mentioned a couple of times the small customer, and I was just wondering, is that per each project, or is it combined? If we add more, do we end up above that at some point?
Strictly on a per-meter basis.
Okay.
So if a building had multiple meters, you could have multiple small customer generators at that site. So it would not be impacted by adding other, any future projects in the city.
Thank you. Alderman Lopez, did you have a question? Alderman Laws.
First off, thank you, guys. This is awesome. What you're doing is, can't be overstated how important the work you're doing is, and I appreciate it. That being said, I'm kind of dumb, and I have a couple of questions. So you kind of answered the question that I had about snow, and it's surprising to me there's not technology that exists that melts the snow off of the solar panels. Does that exist? Is it just cost prohibitive?
Sure. Great question, and we go back and forth all the time. So, long story short, it is not worthwhile. So there are products and technologies out there which utilizes, you know, low-voltage current to get up there and melt the snow to keep the snow off the arrays. But as we all know, as New Hampshire residents, you know, in the winter months, you know, December, January, February, that sun may be out, you know, two, three hours a day, right? So basically, the energy and cost of that energy required to melt that snow is significantly less than the additional electricity that you would get from having clear solar panels through that time of the year.
Okay. Thank you. And speaking of technology, Moore tells us that 18 months from now, there's going to be cheaper, smaller solar panels, right?
Moore tells us that about computers.
Okay, but it has nothing to do with this technology?
It actually doesn't.
Is it upgradable if there is new technology that comes out?
Sure. Awesome question. So I've been in the PV industry for 12 years, which actually makes me like really old at the PV industry, so that's kind of cool. But in that timeframe, we certainly have, don't get me wrong, we've seen significant improvements in that technology, but not a huge quantity, nothing like Moore's Law on efficiency of the panels. That efficiency has gone up, certainly, from roughly, you know, 12 to 13%, 10-plus years ago, to now we're seeing 18 to 19%. But the biggest driver of this explosion in solar energy that we've experienced in New Hampshire and nationally is not increases in efficiency, it's reductions in manufacturing cost. So as that demand has gone up, what we've seen is the manufacturers have ramped up to meet that demand, significantly reducing the cost. So while the technology has improved, not, that has not been the biggest driver there. It's additional manufacturing capacity and lower costs there. So the solar panels themselves, as Dan mentioned, you know, they have a 25-year warranty and a 40-year lifespan. There is very little reasoning, from what we've seen, to update those panels. You know, these things are going to pay for themselves in a few years, and then you're just getting free electricity. What we would see, and this is now, this is me speculating a little bit, but I do expect to see some improvements in the inverter technology. So if we think about the system, the solar panels are kind of dumb. It's glass, aluminum, and silicon, just sitting there. You know, they're just, you know, electrons are hopping up and down, making power. The brains of the operation is within that inverter. So I certainly expect during the lifetime of these systems... So, I certainly expect during the lifetime of these systems to see improvements in that inverter technology, which basically allows them to interact more intelligently with the utility grid, things like demand response. In those cases, the inverters are actually quite easy to swap out. So, you don't have to touch any of that work on the roof, and, you know, in 10 or 15 or 20 years, if we wanted to improve our inverter technology, that would be a very easy change.
And I will just note, you'll see the financials in a moment, we do model a full replacement of the inverters on each of these systems midway through the system life. We just assume that's an expense you'll have at some point during the system life, so we've included that in the financial model.
Alderman Dowd.
I have a few questions. And actually, the first one isn't, is from something you originally said. If you put them on a roof, and the roof has to be replaced, how difficult is it to have the panels moved and reinstalled? And is that something that comes with the warranty or is that additional cost? If the roof has to be replaced, you need the additional cost allocated to move and reinstall the panels?
It is not difficult to do that, but it is time-consuming. And in the state of New Hampshire, 100 percent of a solar array needs to be installed, or in this case, removed, by a licensed electrician or someone involved in the Electrical Apprenticeship Program. So, it's labor, it's significant labor that would, that would be an expense. So, that's one of the key reasons why, when we started out with this portfolio of 30-plus municipally-owned buildings, we narrowed it down to what we determined was the highest value, because frankly, we want to avoid that scenario where you do have to remove and then reinstall panels.
So, you want a roof that's got at least a warranty of the same warranty you have with the solar panels, because?
Not necessarily, because that's not foreseeable. So, I guess, you know, and we can get into how the economics work in a little bit more detail, but these systems do reach a break-even point well before the end of their useful lifespan. And any power production or electricity savings past that break-even point, you're, that's all gravy, essentially. So, you know, if there is a roof replacement need at year 30 of the solar system, you know, that solar system had paid for itself, you know, multiple times over, and you've seen those benefits there. What we want to avoid is the need to replace that roof and the need to remove and reinstall those solar panels within that 15-year timeframe. That's kind of the break-even.
I'm hugely in favor of solar panels, but just some questions, because we may be building a new school and putting one on top, and cost is an extremely important characteristic. So, from a maintenance standpoint, you would have to plan that if I have a roof on, say, the top of a school, it would normally cost hypothetically, say, $50,000 to replace. Might be double if you've got solar on it and have to move it and reinstall it.
Potentially, but there's also things that we or any other solar developer and that roofing contractor and that roofing manufacturer could do on the front end to basically avoid that need. We just recently completed a project for the Dover Technical High School, brand-new building, brand-new roof, where we were able to get involved with the Joint Building Committee early and the architect early, and they made some decisions on the design phase, which had a minor increased cost to the roof, but avoided, will significantly reduce future expenses, you know, things like backing board and, you know, millimeter thickness and stuff.
So, the other question I have is, on a year-to-year basis, how much preventive and corrective maintenance has to be done on the solar systems? Who does it and who pays for it?
Yep. Excellent question. So, during the term of the Power Purchase Agreement, the owner of the array pays for that. So, in this case, that would be an investor group that we've done, and they would pay me and my team to come out and do what we call is an annual inspection. So, there's a, you know, it's about a 20-page report of things that we look at, both mechanically and electrically, to basically do preventative maintenance to maximize the uptime and longevity of the system. We're also, on a daily basis for systems like this, monitoring the production. We have really excellent visibility into what's going on on a per-panel basis. So, if there is an issue, we're able to identify it remotely and then make a determination if we need to roll a truck to fix it or if we can resolve it remotely. So, that's all handled by the owner of the PPA.
Good answer to go along with a good question.
I will just note, Alderman Dowd, also in the financials that we'll get into in a moment, we include an optional O&amp;M contract. We're the city to elect upon entering into ownership of the array to continue having Revision provide that service. Totally optional expense, but to be conservative in the numbers, we're assuming that you are paying for that, and so not having to think about the operations and maintenance in the future.
Okay. The other question I have is that there's a lot of technology going on, we've just alluded to a little bit. MIT's doing a lot in the solar panel arrays. They're making them from different products now than they used to. And you need fewer panels now. I have no idea, in having read these articles, when that's going to happen. If we build a new school, we're two years away from a solar panel, minimum. So, we don't know how the technology may change between then and now. But I know they're looking at like two-faced solar, which uses the reflective light that goes beyond the panel, gets coming back.
Yep.
That's, I don't know if you've been involved in that at all?
Very much so. So, those are called, please stop me if I get into the weeds.
Two-faced.
This is my zone right here. So, those are called bi-facial modules. And in some scenarios, they make a ton of sense, because they allow us to harvest extra bits of solar energy and get more production. In these specific types of installations in the state of New Hampshire with our climate, the additional energy that those panels produce do not justify the additional cost of those panels. But that's specific to these buildings. Where we really like those bi-facial modules is on solar carport designs, where now we have, instead of maybe six to 12 inches between the back of a panel and a roof surface, we have, you know, 10 to 12 feet and a nice reflective parking lot surface, so we can really harvest that extra energy. Or, a large ground-mounted array can be another good opportunity for those bi-facial modules.
Right. So, and I noticed in the articles, they said it's not, they don't like to do it on, they like to do it on a flat surface, it's not angled roofs, but because of the way it reflects.
Yep.
Also, the other technology that's coming in is, you know, panels that sort of follow the sun to some degree, to increase their efficiency.
Yeah. Yep. Another great question. So, those are called trackers or solar tracking arrays, and they make them that track the access in one way, so like this, and also dual-access trackers. So, they'll follow it north and south and east to west. Those options are out there. In some cases, they do make sense, not in these cases, because what that does is we're adding significant extra cost to our racking and support systems, which really must be offset by the additional generation that they provide. So, in these power purchase agreement projects, where we do typically have expansive roof or ground spaces, the juice isn't worth the squeeze.
Okay. The other thing that is being discussed in places is having part of the power from the solar panels be able to charge batteries that can be used, especially in the winter, when you get some power and you can put it in the batteries and use it at night, for instance. Is that something that you're involved in or is?
Deeply, deeply involved. Yesterday, I was just in Durham with Eversource and UNH talking about their microgrid initiative. So, we're deeply involved in that. We are the largest installer of commercial and residential battery-based systems in New Hampshire and Maine. Right now, today, for these types of projects, that technology is not cost-effective. It actually harms the economics. But what's really great is that we're designing all of our systems to be future-compatible with what we call AC-coupled battery systems. So, your new school in particular, another two years, give or take, we're going to see the same downward pressure on battery cost, manufacturing cost that we've seen historically in PV panels. So, I could make a convincing argument that instead of a conventional propane generator for your new school, is that we should spend that money instead on a large battery, which will provide emergency backup power and also provide additional opportunities for savings by doing demand response, which the utilities are talking about, and we're working on in Massachusetts. So, long story short, yes, that's awesome, not yet, but these systems will be, in the future, if desired, compatible with a battery retrofit.
Okay. I may have added questions, but I'll let somebody else add us.
This has been fun for me, though.
I'm an engineer, so I just...
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you to Mr. Hasselbeck. You sparked my interest with the, no pun intended, but with the...
No sparks. That's very important to us.
With the fastening type of system.
Yep.
And basically, what I'm concerned about is, like you say, with, I want to focus on the ballast system. We do live in New England, and I understand it's the weight of the ballast that holds it to the roof. So, what is some of the engineering? We do get the occasional hurricane. I understand we're not in tornado alley, but that could. But then again, I couldn't understand that all bets are off with a tornado. But with the New England, you know, nor'easter and everything else like that, how does the ballast system really stand up in this type of a weather climate?
Yeah, really well. So, we look at, you know, local snow loads, local wind loads. So, the same type of design criteria that a new building has to be put through, you know, with the specific wind loads for this town, this city, and building height is a factor, whether there's parapets or whether it's a flat roof, the proximity of the solar arrays to the edge of the roof. If you saw on our designs, there's a four-foot gap between the edge of the roof and the beginning of the solar panels. That serves two purposes. One, for that maintenance and fire access if needed. Two, it actually significantly reduces the loading on that system. The other thing is that we're not looking, all these panels are connected on a, a large horizontal line, basically. So, we get the benefits of this basically large kind of interconnected entity instead of just one individual solar panel at a time. So, I'd be happy to get into the weeds on all of the couts that get done to make sure that they don't blow off, but I've never lost one yet, and I sure as heck don't plan to in downtown Nashville.
And I left my PhD at home, so you don't have to get into the weeds. But, you know, it is a concern, New England, like they say, wait a minute, the weather will change. And to that, do you also look at, in a ballast type of system, you look at the insulation of the building that you put it on. I did have a failure of a structure because people at a later date over-insulated. And when they over-insulated, then there was no wicking of the snow and no melting, and it held us, kept the snow on until finally the roof caved in. So, do you do the usual caveats with that? And you looked at, it meets the engineering standards as-is and not to do any, you know, any architectural changes?
You got it. So, that's exactly why we do our own project-specific engineering review is part of our due diligence, just to make sure, because that happens a lot, especially with older buildings, is that things get added. Oftentimes, what we see is actually additional HVAC units either hung from Raptors or put on top that weren't included in the original designs. That's why it's really important to us that we do our own due diligence just before installation, so we capture any changes or alterations to that building that happened post-construction to make sure that what we're doing doesn't compromise the structural integrity.
Thank you. I would just add, Alderman O'Brien, as an interesting test case, a couple of years ago, Hurricane Sandy was probably the most, the biggest challenge to installed solar. You had a substantial amount of solar penetration in New Jersey and New York State. There were a number of roofs that came off, but no solar came off roofs. There were some roofs with solar that were lifted, but I don't think a single panel was loose in that particular superstorm, and we have so far had a clean track record here in northern New England.
I have a question about the end of life for these panels. What happens then?
Great question. Briefly, and James is free to add. So, the Power Purchase Agreement, which we'll get into momentarily here, actually stipulates that if the city opts not to purchase the array, the panels and the full installation from the investor partner, it is the investor, the owner of the array's responsibility to remove the panels and return the facility to its prior condition absent normal wear and tear. So, that is not the city's responsibility unless you choose to own the array. To be honest, we have a so far small test case, because the commercial lifespan of solar equipment is 40-plus years, and we have systems that are reaching 40 and slightly beyond 40 years old in this country, and they're still putting out about 80 percent of their initial day-one power. So, as of this point, there is not much of a secondary market, because there is not much to feed that market. We do certainly anticipate that in the coming years and certainly decades, that will emerge. The primary ingredients in solar panels are reusable, valuable commodities, glass, silicon, aluminum. Just what, how they will be repurposed presumably into new solar panels remains to be seen, but that's certainly emerging.
And I do think that a better case study is the European market, which is far more established and mature than the US market, and there is a little cottage industry focused on the purchase and recycling of solar panels and associated equipment at the end of their life. So, it's from, again, it's not, it's not any poisonous chemicals, it's glass, aluminum, and inert silicon, so there will be a value and a market for it.
Thank you.
Good business to get into if you're looking for a...
Alderman Lopez.
So, just two quick questions. The first one is, we were talking about how much this would offset expenses with, in terms of power use. Given that these are absorbing sunlight coming down on a roof, would there be a reduction in cooling costs during particularly hot days?
Yes, is the answer, which is kind of an ancillary benefit to solar arrays, because you're right, these things, they're designed to suck up solar energy. We've done some really neat studies, especially over these past few weeks where it's been so hot, in taking our flare guns and measuring temperatures of the solar panels versus temperatures of the roof surface underneath. And UV rays and heat are two of the biggest factors in roof wear and tear. So, they're much cooler, which reduces cooling costs. What we can't do is quantify exactly how much cooling load we're going to reduce. So, because we can't quantify it with 100 percent certainty, we don't include that in any of our cash flow models. But, the benefit is there, it is real. We can show you differences in temperature and thermal imaging, but I can't say this will also save the city X thousands of dollars in cooling costs.
And just my final question was, you would, in discussion with Alderman Dowd, you said, other climates have a higher level of your implication, I think, was that there's a higher level of sunlight?
Yes. Yep, it's something we call irradiance levels. So, irradiance is the measure of watts per meter squared, but we are not in a terrible spot. We're about maybe, the best predictor of solar production is your latitude lines, right? So, your latitude line is a really good predictor. So, you see, you know, down by the equator, that same solar panel will generate roughly 30 percent more energy than it will up here in New Hampshire. But here in New Hampshire, they still do pretty good, and if you follow the latitude line straight east to Germany, Germany has one of the largest solar markets in the world, and they're able to meet, what, was it 50 percent plus of...
On peak sunny windy days, the entire German economy, fourth-largest economy in the world, is virtually 100 percent solar and wind-powered. And they actually have 30 percent less solar insulation or irradiance than we do here in New Hampshire at a higher latitude, and yet they've been able to achieve that substantial benchmark with a couple decades head start over this region.
So, we do okay, but it, basically what you're saying is that compared to equatorial regions, New Hampshire is not as bright.
That is true, as my wife commones often, but nonetheless, a lot of solar output.
Bright enough. Yeah, bright enough.
Commissioner, do you have a question?
Excuse me. I have one question, and it may be more aesthetics than technical. But when I saw the inverters, the slide with the inverters, one, I want to know, are they all mounted externally or some mounted internally?
It depends on the project. So, we can do either. You know, in this case, we have all examples. So, all the inverters are rated to be mounted externally. So, if we need to put them outside, that is what they're designed for. If, in the top left, that's the case where we had some spare space available in an electrical and mechanical room. If that's an option, we'd love to take that option. Another option on the top right, we... we mounted those inverters right on the roof surface itself. So, that's another option. So, if aesthetics were a concern, we could include.
My concern is the array of conduit on that building's surface, which after you've designed the building to make it look aesthetically pleasing.
Sure.
Particularly a fire station in the community. Then we end up with 20 rows of conduit.
Yeah, yeah, it's a great question.
Is that always necessary?
In, no, it's not. So, first of all, aesthetics actually does play into our design, because we firmly believe that our solar adoption rate in New Hampshire is 1%. So, there's a lot of opportunity there. And these municipal projects are so valuable, because they're often community residents' first exposure to solar, and if it looks ugly, that's not going to be a positive experience, and that doesn't help anybody, right? In that specific case, that's actually in the city of Keene, that system is gigantic. So, it's a massive power plant, and that specific location is on the rear of the building, sandwiched between the dumpsters and where they park the Zamboni. So, we do take that into account, and, and, you know, I want to be clear, we're electricians, not magicians, and we do have to connect our solar arrays to the inverters, but if, you know, I'm not looking to put all that stuff right next to your front door, I guess.
And I am happy to advise on these specific properties, because these are substantially smaller arrays. There is sufficient room. I think the plan, it hasn't been all confirmed. We're still in that process, working with the managers of those facilities, but the plan is to locate those two or three inverters, not the eight or 10 that you see on larger arrays, in those utility rooms and run interior conduit runs. That's always our preference from an aesthetic standpoint, and we should be able to do that in these cases.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. We touched on maintenance of the panels. Does, is there any concern or issues that come up with the roof maintenance once something's installed?
Yeah, another great question. That's why we really feel strongly about due diligence prior to a solar installation, to essentially avoid major roof maintenance there. But in the case where there is, say, a, what does happen sometimes, you know, we saw the HVAC units up there. That's often, those heating and cooling units typically do have penetrations. Those are often the locations for roof leaks or areas of the roof that need maintenance in the life cycle of a building. So, our first approach is to avoid getting too close to those. But in the event where, you know, we did need to move some panels, it's not a big deal to move a few solar panels. It is a big deal to remove all of them for a big re-roof. So, a simple roof leak, if that happened, you know, we're moving only a handful of panels in that specific area, so that's very minimal exposure, very minimal cost.
And it is worth noting, Alderman Lopez, Lopez asked the question about the roof condition. In addition to reducing cooling loads by exactly how much, we don't know, hence not included in the financials, it will extend the roof life. Those UV rays are the primary cause of the degradation of the, of the roof itself. So, covering that up, soaking up those rays instead, as the panels are designed to do, will have that additional benefit.
And just to follow on, as we are starting to look at building projects, I'd just be interested to know what we can do to make it more solar-friendly. So, we have the Performing Arts Center coming up. We're talking about a new school. What kinds of things can we do to make sure that they're solar-friendly, even if we don't install it right at that time?
Thank you so much for, for looking ahead, thinking ahead in that way. And I would note to Alderman Dowd's question that we have had some conversations with members of the school department and done some preliminary designs. The two high schools each has, each have capacity for about a megawatt. That would be 10 times the arrays you see here, so tremendous potential in the city in future. I would say that the short answer, Alderwoman Kelly, is we are always grateful to be brought in early in the process. We're often working with several municipalities and businesses, putting up new buildings at this point in time, and advising their electrical contractors on conduit runs, on spacing for inverters in the utility room, so they don't need to go outdoors, preferably, on roof type selection. And so, that's something obviously unique to a given project and their needs, but we're eager to provide that guidance at the get-go, and certainly can do so. Whether or not we're a chosen vendor, we're happy to provide that input.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, and any new design building, like the new school, the Performing Arts Center, or anything like that, the architect and the construction manager do a lot of the planning to allow for the solar array, and, and they have a lot of that responsibility to make sure it's done correctly and aesthetically, and so they would work with a solar company to perform all that work, but they do it in accordance with the drawings that they come up with.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I definitely, I think my question was, if we were planning on it, then definitely that would happen, but if we're not, and we're just putting up a new building, are we at least thinking ahead and putting in roofs that will not, that can actually sustain this?
Oh, no, we're way ahead, and we are doing solar.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate you being here. Did you have something? Oh, you still have more presentations, more. Oh, the financials.
Briefly to the all-important financials.
Oh, yeah.
You're certainly permitted to, to address without if you choose, but I will move swiftly through this. Naturally, we certainly invite questions and appreciate the chance to answer them, as you've given us so far. But let me just briefly preface, I'm fortunate to be a local citizen and taxpayer here in Nashua. We deeply appreciate and respect, speaking on behalf of a company whose mission it is to accelerate this transition from fossil fuel dependence to clean energy, we deeply appreciate and respect that the Energy Committee here in Nashua has proposed to the aldermen, and I believe the aldermen have accepted their recommendation that the city move toward 100% clean energy, a very exciting goal that now many communities across New Hampshire and the nation have adopted. Naturally, we're always thrilled to work with communities that, that have environmental goals as their primary motivator, but the financials matter, too, speaking as a local citizen as well. And so, at the outset, when we're approaching a project of this sort, and frankly, nine out of 10 projects that we develop, we want to ensure at the outset that this will provide a financial return to the community, to the business, whoever it may be. And the primary mechanism to achieve that with a municipality or any other nonprofit tax-exempt entity is what's called a power purchase agreement. To give a couple of the kind of summary facts on, on power purchase agreements, the challenge that we're seeking to overcome with PPAs is that, in their wisdom, the federal government has chosen to direct all incentives for solar, federal incentives, through the tax code. That means if you're a homeowner, a business owner, and have a tax bill to the IRS, you can take that 30% investment tax credit that the mayor alluded to, which steps down at the end of this year. You can depreciate the asset if you're a business, but if you are non, a non-federal taxpayer such as a municipality, you have no access to that directly. The solution, which was developed, in fact, by the federal government, the National Renewable Energy Labs at the Department of Energy over a decade ago, and has been blessed by the IRS, which is, in fact, the primary mechanism by which large-scale solar has been implemented in the United States, is this power purchase agreement. As the name suggests, the city is not purchasing the array, the capital expense for the panels, the inverters, the racking, et cetera. The city is purchasing the power that the array produces and feeds to its facilities at a rate below the current utility rate. What this looks like is you have investors, on the one hand, who are providing the capital to finance these projects, and I'll show you what those specific numbers are on the next slide. They are owning and operating the array, contracting with Revision, with James's team, to provide the O and M, once we've fully installed the system and permitted it. They are recouping their investment through that federal investment tax credit and depreciation, and some very modest environmental attributes, renewable energy credits, and crucially, from the sale of the electricity it produces to the city at that below-market rate. For the city's part, the city is licensing the use of those two roofs and potentially future roofs or ground areas for the purpose of installing solar. It is committing to buy the power from the array at the rate schedule set out in that PPA contract. And then, in order to maximize its long-term savings, after five years, which is the minimum period of time the investor must own the asset, it's the IRS recapture period on that tax credit. Short of five years, the investor must return those tax incentives on a prorata basis. But once we reach day one of year six, the city may, and is in fact encouraged to, for its financial benefit, acquire the array at a substantial discount, and then generate its own power going forward for the next 30 to 40 years. The specifics for these two projects would be an initial cost to the investor of just over $500,000, an upfront cost to the city of zero, because again, you're not owning the array, you're simply purchasing the power from the array. In order to make the investor whole, and I'll say a word about the investors that we are fortunate to work with, the city would be purchasing that power at a starting rate of 8.8 cents per kilowatt hour, rising 2% annually thereafter for the duration of that PPA contract, again, minimum five years, standard term of 25 years, but those buyout options are annual, beginning in year six. So, the city determines for how long they remain in the PPA. If you were to exercise that option at the earliest possible point in year six, there would be a capital expense of just over $300,000. That amount is pegged to fair market value, as required by the IRS, so the amount declines each year thereafter. If the city were to defer that buyout, as it may choose to do in, in that given year, you aren't required to commit upfront. But once again, the sooner you own the asset and are generating your own power, the greater the long-term benefits. And then, assuming the city does exercise its buyout option in year six, the net savings, so this is deducting the cost to buy it out at $300,000, the cost to maintain it, were you to contract with Revision for this optional operations-maintenance contract, the modest degradation factor, we model in a loss in production of half of 1% per year, hence a 40-year-old system at 80%, as we see today on systems in the ground. We build in these factors. I noted earlier, a full replacement of the inverters midway through the system life, very conservative assumptions around utility inflation and renewable energy credits. Put all this together, and our conservative estimates on savings for the city over the 25-year warranty period come out to a little under half a million dollars, and then if you extend out to the minimum commercial lifespan of 40 years, 1.27 million dollars. To represent these numbers graphically for a moment, you see in the yellow line, that is the solar PPA with that early buyout in year six. So, you have modest initial savings, and we can circulate the more detailed financials, but the city is purchasing the power from the array. That 8.8 cent rate is approximately 20% below current utility costs. So, you're saving roughly 20% on each kilowatt hour provided, generated by the solar array. So, relatively modest initial savings without any capital cost. Were you then, in year six, to buy out at about $300,000, you would be a payback of, so to speak, of, between year six and year 12 or 13, of approximately six and a half years to recoup that investment, and, and from that point forward, your savings are accumulating to the long-term figure of 1.27 million. The blue line there is if you were to, your worst-case scenario, if you will, that is if the city determined to never allocate the capital to purchase the array, simply took that power purchase agreement to the full 25 years, and then acquired it at a very, very low cost after 25 years, your long-term savings would be less, but still strongly positive. And just a final way of representing these same numbers, which, which we think is worth understanding, and please pardon the label, initially, we did present in the RFP for five sites. We're currently at two. So, on the right, you see the, the status quo scenario. So, for these facilities, which are Eversource Rate Class G, general commercial, the current rate, the current cost of that electricity, when you factor in not just the supply, but the transmission, distribution, stranded costs, all the line items on your bill that are charged on a volumetric basis per kilowatt hour, the current cost is about 12.3 cents per kilowatt hour. To the left, the utility line in gray is, if we take the federal government projections on utility cost inflation over the next several decades, the U.S. Energy Information Agency projects for New Hampshire an average 2.5% per year inflation. We've seen more in recent years, about 3% going back the last 15 years, but we think it's prudent and conservative to use the government projections a bit lower than that going forward. So, those are your utility status quo scenarios with, in that assumption, an average cost over the next 40 years of that power of just over 20 cents per kilowatt hour. While those are projections, the numbers on the left, we can have a lot of confidence in. We know the size of the array, the power output, based on the modeling that our engineers do through helioscope, as James described. We know the, the cost to operate and maintain the arrays, the cost of the buyout, the degradation factor. Building all of this in, we arrive at, on the left, a long-term leveledized cost, so an average unit cost per kilowatt hour over the lifespan of the solar equipment of 5.7 cents, if you exercise the early buyout, of 8.5 cents if you do not buy out at any point, but go the full 25-year term, or were you to purchase upfront, 5.8 cents, but naturally, that would require a significant capital outlay at the beginning, without the flexibility to determine at a future point if you choose to own it or not. So, that's the, the financial summary. Happy to take any questions you may have there, and that is really the substance of the proposal, so we don't want to take too much more of your time.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
It may just be worth, if I may, I recalled one more slide that I threw in here, and then we can talk a little bit about kind of community engagement, if you wish. But as to where that capital comes from, something that Revision takes a lot of pride in, as part of our mission as a certified benefit corporation, is extending solar, making solar available to nonprofits and municipalities that, in New Hampshire's context, with very limited state incentives, would otherwise not have an opportunity to go solar. When you read about utility-scale solar projects, the financing in almost every case comes from Wall Street, where they're able to earn market-level returns, particularly if it's a state like California with substantial additional state incentives. In New Hampshire, for smaller-scale projects with limited incentives, there unfortunately is not a commercial PPA investor market. We just can't sell these projects, except rarely at very substantial scale. But projects at this size simply don't have financing available in the existing solar investor market. Consequently, what Revision has worked to do over the last several years, beginning as a kind of proof of concept on our own balance sheet, by directly investing in and owning upwards of 70 nonprofit power purchase agreements for various nonprofits around the region. But in the last two years, in order to bring added scale, we have recruited and partnered with a number of mission-aligned investors, including for this project, a family that lives here in this community and works in this community, that is blessed to have a large tax bill to the IRS, which they, through such an investment, have the opportunity to essentially redirect by investing that capital in solar projects, taking advantage of the existing tax incentives, and providing much lower-cost financing than is otherwise available. We call this program Revision Solar Impact Partners. We've so far built over 120 of these PPAs for other municipalities and nonprofits, like the Soup Kitchen. And that is why we believe, or perhaps part of why we have the opportunity to work with many smaller community organizations and smaller municipal projects, thanks to these investor partners who share our mission of deploying solar at, at lower cost. Let me shut up with that and welcome any questions you may have on the finances.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah, so, when you did the, because I know the city, you know, bulk purchases power. So, when you did the market analysis, did you factor that, what the city purchases power at, into your analysis?
We did. Because these two facilities will be net metering facilities, they're not required to register as net metering, but because there will be excess production in peak summer months, they will, under current regulations, require, will have to revert to default supply, which would add, were they purchasing net power, would add between a penny and two pennies per kilowatt hour, and Bob Hayden is expert in, in the competitive supply market and can speak in more detail. So, for these two facilities, they will require that reversion to default supply. For your interest, perhaps, as we look at larger-scale projects at the airport or other off-site locations, which would be directly fed into the grid, they would, through group net metering, offset multiple city accounts, but each of those participating accounts in such a group. in such a group would retain the ability, as they do today, to purchase that power on the third-party competitive market, supply market, rather than going to default. So default makes sense in a situation like this, where you're providing most of the power onsite, so you're getting it not, in fact, from Eversource, but from your own rooftop. And for larger-scale projects, we group net meter to avoid that requirement.
Okay. If I could continue, yeah. Knowing that makes, you know, I think, I'm glad that that was factored in, because I think this is, for me, anyway, this is a no-brainer, because it's no upfront cost to the city, and regardless of whether or not, down the line, we purchase the array on top of these buildings, we're going to be saving money. So as somebody who, you know, is responsible for making sure that we are doing everything we can to save the taxpayer a dollar, that not doing this would be foolish. So I certainly will support this project.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
We threw a couple of just feel-good in terms of community engagement. James briefly mentioned, we love to come into the schools and educate, that monitoring platform can be made available to the entire community. And so we hope that if we have the opportunity to complete these installations, we can serve as a partner, educating the community and helping to achieve maybe the, in my humble opinion, the most important slide here is the actual environmental benefits. As a concerned citizen with young kids, as many of you are with kids or grandkids, these projects alone would have a very meaningful environmental impact in terms of carbon pollution reduction, and we thank you so much for your leadership and the opportunity to partner.
Madam President, I think there are two things we should cover. Number one, what timing, how soon does this need to be approved in order to make this definitely feasible for this year? And number two, I was thinking we might ask Mr. Hall to, who's representing Conway, and their participation, these financials rely on their participation as well. Maybe let him, Mr. Hall, address any, who's, I know is generally supportive, but, you know, there's the lease issue, maybe let him address us a little on that. You just got to bend over, that's all.
Charles Hall, 37 Chester Street, president of the Board of Directors of Conway Arena. Thank you for inviting us. Represent our board is Jim Conway, Tom Monahan, Morgan Hollis, Brad Crake, and Joe Belavance Jr. So approximately in 2002, 2003, we entered into an agreement with the city to build Conway Arena. We took a parking lot next to the DPW and built a beautiful facility. It was approximately a $3.7 million facility. We had a note of about 1.2. We're well on our way to paying that off. Why we'd like to extend the lease, so we have a 30-year lease, and with the addition of the solar panels, which is a great thing, this now gives us the ability, in year, approximately '23, that sixth year that Dan talked about, of buying this, buying the array out for about $490,000. So in year '23, we would probably want to take another note for that, whether we need to take it a full amount or what, but this, it'd be longer than, probably longer than a seven-year note. So this gives us that flexibility to do that. Also, although you said, you know, roof will last forever, it probably will, but, you know, we'd like the flexibility that if, at year '30, we need to replace the roof, it gives us that flexibility as well. So what we would really like would be an additional 20 years, which would make it a total of 50. And getting back, you know, I think, and hopefully everybody here agrees, that we've been a real community supporter and have done a good job stewards for the arena. Alderman, Karen, and Mayor Donches were at our event last week when we gave out a little over $50,000, as you mentioned, which actually now totals, since 2004, we've given over $760,000 to local nonprofits, Boys and Girls Club, Nashua Y, Police Athletic League, Fright Night, it'll do Fright Night, Margarite's Place, Adult Learning Center, you name it, Nashua Soup Kitchen, Bro Nashua. So you name the local Nashua nonprofit, and we've given money to it. So I think we'd appreciate the extension, it would just kind of help us be a full participant of this project.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. No, I completely understand that, you know, from a commercial lending perspective, you have to have that lease in place in order for a lender to give you that loan. And, you know, a few years ago, when I was on the board, we did that for the Airport Authority, and we did that for private citizens who had hangers and different things that they wanted to do, get loans for that they were unable to, so we extended that out for 99 years, I think. But I certainly would support extending a lease, and I, you know, like you said, everything you've done for the community has been great. I think the mission there is, has been achieved, and I can't see needing to really discuss many major changes to that lease. So as long as, you know, we're under similar terms, I think I could support something like that.
Anyone else have questions? Alderman Judd.
So forgive me for asking, but it's the only way I'm going to find out. So somebody said, unless I misunderstood, that, you know, you get like a $650,000 profit? Is that, did I hear correctly? Is that true?
I wish it was true.
Yeah.
If it was, we'd give it right back to the local nonprofit. No, no, I think what you remember is Mayor Donches today, and I corrected him, over the, since 2004, we've given out $760,000 over that amount of years. Approximately $50,000 a year.
So is, may I continue?
Certainly.
So is, is Conway, I mean, are you guys doing this as, you know, a service to the city? Whatever you take in, it pays off your expenses, you've got the note to service?
Exactly.
And you guys personally are not making any money?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, okay.
Now, in full disclosure, I own an HVAC company, I do work for the city, I do work at Conway Arena, I do work at the Boys Club, you know, so there is a little of that, but no, we don't, we give everything out to the nonprofits, we put money into a reserve. Two years ago, we put rubber, new rubber flooring in all the locker rooms. Last year, we bought a new Zamboni to replace the original, that's about $100,000. This fall, we're redoing the rest of the rubber roofing, so, rubber roofing, rubber flooring. So if you, you know, I certainly encourage you to go by and take a look at it, it's in, we take a lot of pride in it. But all the money that we make at the end of the year, just like you said, goes to the nonprofit, goes to the mortgage, we put some in the reserve just for these type of expenses that come up. But none of us make a salary or get paid or anything for our involvement with the arena. It's truly a love for the city and hockey, and figure skating.
Well, thank you for clarifying that.
Alderman Lopez.
I feel like I can't act, and maybe some of the more experienced board members or the mayor could tell me, but I can't actually think of something that the city owns in terms of entertainment value, which isn't typically better managed by somebody like, I'm taking the Holman Stadium. On the other hand, I'm thinking of the Arts and Sciences Building, which we tried to run and didn't do so great. So I feel like if we have somebody who's leasing it and doing a major service to the community, both financially in terms of donating to nonprofits, but running it effectively in the way that it's supposed to be run, I'm in favor of supporting them, too. If all they're asking is the ability to improve the facility, to the extent that we can save money on electricity for it.
Alderman Dow.
Question for whoever wants to grab it. I am going to assume we'll need legislation, and if so, has it been drafted yet, and does it need a sponsor, and how quickly can we get it in the pipeline?
Well, I think we could, I think it's simple legislation, which could be prepared, prepared for the meeting of August 13.
Count me in.
If I may, Mayor, just your question about timeline, and thank you so much, Mr. Hall and the board. Just to reiterate very briefly, economies of scale certainly do count. The 8.8 cent PPA rate is not something that we would be able to offer and cover our costs or the investors' costs without the participation of Conway Arena at a 400 kilowatt, so four times roughly the size of the individual projects currently on the, in play for the city. So in terms of timeline, we are, Revision Energy blessed to have a lot of demand, particularly with the sun setting of the tax credit. So James and the team are doing a lot of juggling of priorities. We want very much to complete this this year, but we are pushing up toward some major procurements that we need to make of panels and racking, et cetera, and we cannot make those major procurements until we have the signed contract. We understand there's a process with the Board of Aldermen, but we hope very much, as we've relayed to, to members of the staff here, that that can be fully finalized and signed in the month of August, so that we can stay on track for a fall installation.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, can we have the presentation added to the minutes of this meeting, so that the people that aren't here tonight can have access to it?
We'll be pleased to share it.
Thank you so much. Alderman Clemmons.
So given, given what Dan just said, with the month of August, I would assume that that would mean we'd need a special meeting?
Because we only have one meeting in August.
So we would need to consider that, I guess, but.
We will, we will schedule a date.
Sounds good.
Director Marchand, did you have something to add?
Not that short. You do have two meetings in August, don't you have a second one later this month, on the 20th?
No, we only meet once in July, once in August.
Okay, so we'll be looking to find out which committees are most likely to be referred to, to see if we can get those set up as well for your early September.
We will work on it.
So we can move it quickly.
Expediently.
Thank you.
Alderman Dow.
Just move two budget meetings to account for some other legislation. So the two budget meetings are going to be September 5, and I think the 11th.
16th.
Excuse me. Wednesday, this, no, that's wrong. But, oh, so the August 26 budget's going, and I don't know if this has to go to budget or not, but it's going to September 5, and the September 23 is going to September 16. So one's being pushed back, one's being moved up.
We'll work it out with our legislative manager. Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah, I was going to say that it has to be done this month, can't move past into September.
Moving the meetings for other legislation reasons, some of which you're very interested in.
We'll find the dates. I assure you, we will. It's a good project, and thank you very much.
Just to be very clear, so I am, I am the construction guy, so forgive my ignorance to the political process. This is not, we are not, it is an accelerated timeline. That is not because we're trying to force a decision, but it's because it takes time to build these things, and some of these things are outside of our control. And the way that the tax law works, it's not just my team building that project, it has to meet something which is called, you know, utility permission to operate. So even after my team finishes the actual construction, there's another few weeks of stuff that Eversource and Unitil and the utilities we have to do, and if we do not get that all completed and all our Ts crossed and Is dotted by December 31, that tax credit goes down, meaning the value of the tax credit to the investor goes down, meaning that the savings to the taxpayers of Nashua also go down. So I just want to build stuff. So anything that can be done to allow my team to spend, I have to also spend roughly $270,000 to write checks to make this happen, and I would love the certainty of, before I spend that money, that this project was going to come to fruition. So I just want to clarify, that is where the time pressure is coming from, not our desire to be greedy, but basically, it actually provides a better financial return to the taxpayers of Nashua. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you very much for that clarification, really appreciate that. And we will, we will make this work, we'll make the timeline work, anyway. Okay. Alderman Lopez.
The sooner he gets to build stuff, the sooner we save money on it, I'm just saying.
That's also correct.
Anything else? Mayor, nothing else to add?
I have nothing else.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for being here this evening, we appreciate your presentation.
All right, so now we have the nonprofit, right?
Yeah. I'm going to let this go. Wait a minute. How about I just, how about I just say it's a good question? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the Board of Aldermen go into non-public session by roll call pursuant to RSA 91-A, semicolon, 3, Roman numeral 2, bracketed D, for the consideration of acquisition, sale, or lease of real or personal property, which, if discussed in public, would likely benefit a party or parties whose interests are adverse to those of the general community.
Okay, we need a second on that. Alderman Loz, second stat. Clear the room with the clerk.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yay.
Alderman Gedge.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Loz.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Judd.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
So the mics are on.